Ladies and gentlemen, the chairman.
Good morning. Good morning. Please remain standing and I'll ask for the Graham Bot to lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Chairman. The name of the Father, under the Son, and under the Holy Spirit. Amen. We pray, Heavenly Father, for your blessing upon all who live in this county of Staffordshire. We give your grace to those who occupy positions of authority that they may fulfil their responsibilities with wisdom and equity. Grant that true faith, honest dealing, and mutual service may be the standard of our common life and make us strong to meet every challenge which the future may bring. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Heavenly Father, we pray at this time for those who suffer in any kind of need. We pray particularly for those known to us who are in need of your support, your strength, and your comfort. We pray for our vice-chairman Colin Gretrix and for Bernard Williams that you may strengthen them, support them, and give them hope and courage in the days and weeks ahead. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. We pray that your grace may be in our hearts and your wisdom in our minds so that all we do may be guided by you, that we may always have the concerns and the good of others at the centre of all that we seek to do in your name. Through Christ the Lord, amen. I invite you to join with me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen.
Please be seated. Good morning again, and welcome to our Christmas meeting, or our pre-Christmas meeting, which I'm sure the chamber will be full of Christmas goodwill and cheer this morning, I'm absolutely sure of that. And we've got lunch, we've got, I remind members that we have lunch at one o'clock. Item one on the agenda, have we any apologies?
Good morning, good morning, Chairman. Yes, we do indeed. We have councillor Abrams, councillor Eglund, councillor Gretrix, councillor Jay, councillor Peters, councillor Wilkes, councillor Williams, and councillor Parry.
Are there any further apologies? Councillor Jill Waring, can we please add that, councillor Jill Waring? Thank you. Item two on today's agenda, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest? No, thank you. Item three, confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting. I move that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 12th October 2023 be signed as a true record. Is that agreed? Moving on to item four, which is the chairman's correspondence. There's normally no discussion about the chairman's correspondence, but a number of members have approached me and said they would like to speak on the chairman's correspondence. So I'm happy to waive the normal conventions, and if anybody wants to speak after I've done the two announcements, they are more than welcome to. Announcement one is the Armed Forces Covenant Employer Recognition Scheme Gold Award. I am pleased to be able to inform members that the council has recently received an Armed Forces Covenant Employer Recognition Scheme, the Gold Award. The Gold Award is the highest badge of honour for the organisations which have signed the Armed Forces Covenant and demonstrated outstanding support for those who serve and have served. The Gold Awards recognise employers who actively support the Armed Forces community in their workplace and also encourage others to follow their lead. The award scheme attracts entries in companies from every part of the country, in the public and the private sector. This is a truly fantastic achievement and well done to all involved in the County Council with that one. The second announcement is the King's Award for Voluntary Services. I'm sure that members will wish to join me in extending the council's congratulations to the eight voluntary organisations from Staffordshire who have been awarded the King's Award for Voluntary Services in this year's honours. This prestigious award recognises outstanding work by local volunteer groups, charities, and organisations who benefit their local communities. It was created in 2002 to celebrate Queen Elizabeth II's Golden Jubilee, and the King emphasised his desire to continue with the award. My warmest congratulations go to these groups in Staffordshire. Burden Hope in Burton-on-Trent, they have kindly invited me to pop along to see them, and I'm genuinely looking forward to that. The Jill Clues Academy for Theatre Arts in Newcastle Underline, Just Family CIC in Stoke-on-Trent, AED Donate in Stone, Home Start from Tamworth, Rough and Ruby Urban Youth Charity from Hanley in Stoke-on-Trent, and Friends of the Allied Special Forces Grove in Kings Bromley, the Mars Recreation Ground and Community Centre from Kimberley. And genuinely, what an achievement for our people. Eight groups in Staffordshire received the King's Award. That is absolutely fantastic. As promised, I will take speakers on this. Councillor Graham Hutton.
Thank you, Chairman. I join with you, Chairman, in congratulating the Academy for Theatre Arts in my division for being awarded the King's Award for Voluntary Service. Huge honour for the academy and the county. The academy is the foremost theatre arts academy in Staffordshire. On the 10th February this year, it published its latest exam results where students achieved 100% success rate with 91% distinctions. Because the curriculum is narrow compared to a further education at sixth form college, the results measured by onward placements are crucial in maintaining the high reputation they have achieved so far. Last year, it placed all its final year students into top colleges and universities. The academy also helps lots of other organisations out by making space for their activities and meetings at a peppercorn rent. Organisations such as Will Stanton United Football Club, Bradwell Young Carers Club, and Bradwell Youth Table Tennis Club. Not all students get funding. In the last five years alone, 75 students have left the academy for careers or higher education that the academy has funded as part of its charitable purpose. The academy and lower school are also a haven for vulnerable children and currently have six on their books. It currently also has three Ukrainian children who are accommodated without any charges whatsoever. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Staffordshire County Council's property team for the help and support they have given the academy, not least a 10-year lease starting this year. Chairman, fellow councillors, it has been my honour to bring the achievements of the academy for theatre arts to your attention. Thank you.
Councillor Tina Clements.
Thank you, Chairman. And just to place on record what an honour to be given the Gold Award for the Military Covenant. It's an absolute, it's a lot of hard work, and it means so much to our military communities, to those of us that have served, and to those of them still serving, and to anyone that's still suffering. I just wanted to mention on the King's Awards, Home Start Tamworth was launched at the Philip Dick Centre on 31st of March 2000, so 23 years in the making. And it's a community network of trained volunteers and expert support helping families with young children through the most challenging times. And, you know, none of us know when one of us could be there. They are there for parents when they need them most because they believe that children can't wait. Home Start recruits and trains volunteers from around the Tamworth area and then carefully matches the volunteer with the appropriate family. All of the families they support have at least one child under five. The volunteer visits the family in their own home at least once a week. And I've been speaking to some of the families that have been helped by this charity, and they tell me how much of difference it's made to their lives, and they tell me where they think they might have been without this charity. They also run child and family support groups, or any family that would benefit on a weekly basis. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank all the volunteers, not just in Tamworth, but across the whole of Staffordshire, who deliver vital services for people that need it the most, and to wish them all a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Councillor Clements, very well put. Councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I speak on behalf of the Friends of the Allied Special Forces Memorial Grove in Kings Bromley. The work that they do actually will be seen at the National Arboretum, Memorial Arboretum at Orwas. In terms of the work that they do, it's in funding and maintenance of the particular grove in question. And I know Mike Colton, the secretary, having a beer or two with him in the Royal Oak in Kings Bromley, recognised how much work he and his team do. And I am absolutely delighted that they have been awarded, so well deserved. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Green skills sector. This is a plan for the future for everyone and not just young people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and good morning, everybody. I'll keep this one brief. Just referring to paragraph four, I welcome the fact that the highways works have recommenced by Amy on the Chatterley Valley site. That is very important strategic route for residents in the southern part of My Wood. And I also welcome and encourage the engagement from the highways offices. We're trying to resolve the access issues on the warf road business and housing site in Biddelf, which is one of the most important sites in the Staffordshire local plan. We have got some issues with regards to access on that site. The obvious access from the roundabout on the new bypass seems to be blocked off by a new supermarket. So we do need quite a significant planning, certainly project planning intervention from the county offices to see if we can find a suitable alternative route. So I would like to have the leaders' commitment that that engagement which is started would continue with a degree of earnestness so we can start to deliver on the business units, which are completely and utterly lacking within the town to represent. Thank you.
councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On paragraph three, why is it that Staffordshire has a disposable income which is increasing faster than elsewhere? Isn't it because we have an older population, perhaps bolstered by good pensions? But these figures are nothing to be complacent about. Inflation may be falling, but prices are still going up, and we're still in the middle of a cost of living crisis. It's pretty disgraceful that people in full-time work, like public servants, like nurses and teachers, are still having to rely on food banks to help feed their families. Thank you.
councillor Philip Boyd.
Thank you very much, Chair, and happy Christmas to you and everybody else in the chamber for a couple of weeks' time. I'll only cover a couple of points now, because I know we've got an item on skills and employability later on. But I thank councillor Perth for his extremely eloquent speech and many very good points in there. The two things I'll just cover are regarding Chatterley Valley. Yes, it's very good news indeed that the site's back open, and it would be great when that is open and providing 1,700 additional highly skilled and hopefully well-paid jobs in the north of the county. And the other point I was going to touch on was the household disposable income figures. They are very welcome in and of themselves. Unpacking that is quite a job of work, and that is something that we want to do. As a broad indicator, it's an indicator of productivity when that is increasing, and that relative productivity versus the national is one of the things we've been working very hard to do in Staffordshire. Because Staffordshire historically was a slightly lower wage and lower productivity economy, we've seen that transforming over a number of years. These figures are a good indicator of that. But we want to unpack it to understand what we do more of, to enhance that, and to get into the granular detail of it, and I'll be more than happy to provide details to council on that. In terms of the broader point about cost of living and inflation, it's good to see inflation dropping. That is benefiting Staffordshire as it is everywhere else in the country. But we are mindful, of course, particularly at this time of year, of the pressures that that has created on many people's household budgets. So a good bit of news, but mustn't be treated in isolation, is part of the bigger picture.
Moving on to item two on the leading statement, which is the integrated performance report for quarter two. I have no speakers on this, so I'm going to move on quickly to item three, which is the strategic vision for early years. councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We all know that early years education is absolutely vital to give children the best start in life, and I certainly welcome the extension of funded childcare. But do we have sufficient childcare providers in Staffordshire to meet the needs of parents under this scheme? Is government funding sufficient to encourage childcare providers to find and invest in more staff to meet demand? What assessment has the county council done on the availability of childcare within Staffordshire? And are there any particular areas where there is a great shortage? Because certainly in other parts of the country, it is certainly the case that childcare providers are not in a position to meet the demand under this new scheme.
councillor Mark Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To start with, to address the points and the questions just made across the floor. At the scrutiny committee, the safeguarding scrutiny committee, very recently, the points that you raised were discussed and expanded and asked by councillors in some great detail. The government have extended the provision from next year down to, eventually down to nine months. So every working families will be entitled for their children to have funded places in childcare from nine months onwards. There is also wraparound cover that is going to be included within that. The sufficiency team that look at ensuring that within Staffordshire there is sufficient sufficiency is also part of the early years team and what this paper is particularly about. And we have been able to take the opportunity to refocus that team, rearrange it slightly, to be able to focus more on ensuring that early years provision ensures that children have a good start in life. Throughout Staffordshire, every child that wants a place, we have been able to find places for. But there is no doubt that as we go forward, knowing exactly how many families and thus how many children will be looking for provision is difficult to estimate. We have been recently allocated an extra 1.6 million by the government to be able to have a look at sufficiency and ensure that in areas of the county where we think sufficiency might not be the case, to be able to encourage and work with providers. We have an absolute excellent rapport with the providers and meet very regularly with them to have a look at these issues, the rate of funding, and other things that impact on the ability to be able to provide childcare across the county. And as Charlotte just suggested, children having the best start in life is an absolutely essential thing, and I think across the chamber, we would absolutely all agree in this. And this gives working families the opportunity to have not just childcare, but childcare that helps with development with children, that makes them school-ready and life-ready.
councillor Alan Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add a little bit to what councillor Sutton said in answer to councillor Atkins' point. It isn't just Staffordshire County Council who has a role to play in this, it is also other statutory agencies. And I'd just like to draw members' attention to the work of the Integrated Care Partnership. At their last meeting, we focused particularly on the early years components of people's lives, making sure that not just the councils, that Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent, but also NHS colleagues across the county of Staffordshire are ensuring that children get the best start possible. It has been a difficult time for families, as we all know, emerging from Covid and the impact that it's had on their education. And we are working hard with our colleagues to try and rectify some of the lost learning and lost time that children had so that they do get that best start. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to item four on the leading statement, which is the Climate Change Annual Report 2023 and the Draft Climate Change Action Plan Revision Three, which was revised in November 2023. My apologies, councillor Nigel Yates.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Chair. I welcome the figures and statistics within the report. Achieving a 50% reduction is very laudable, and it has to be applauded. And I think the key issue there is that the council needs to show leadership, and obviously is showing leadership in this regard. Our emissions account for around about 3% of the overall county, but we have to put our house in order before we can really pressure, whilst we can pressure, everybody else to get things done. So it's very important that we produce these figures, and very important that we produce going forward. And the approvals which have been made, certainly on the LEDs, have brought other benefits as well. I think the lighting is better, plus also the direction of lighting, which allows the skies to be darker. And I think anybody who looks up can probably see a lot more stars now than they have known for an awful long time when we used to have the sodium light. So that's another advantage of it. What we haven't got to do, though, is become complacent, and I'm not saying that is finishing off with a negative. The first 50% in some respects is a relatively straightforward exercise to do. As soon as you do one, you sort of start shelling peas. The problem comes is what we do next. I mean, we've got to look at, obviously, renewables, we've got to look at carbon sequestration, we've got to look at the difficult jobs like the insulation of buildings like this, you know, and we've got many throughout the county. So I applaud certainly what's been achieved. The hard work continues, and I would certainly like to offer the support of this side of the House on making sure that that hard work is delivered. Thank you very much.
councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm probably one of the very few who's read the 80-odd pages of the climate change reduction paper that went to Cabinet in November, besides the Cabinet. And we've achieved quite a bit since I was... I can remember the first time we started it, and we were taking out the coal-fired boilers in schools many, many moons ago, and converting to that. And the Climate Change Reduction Plan is really quite something that I think the few lines that we've got on the agenda today cover a major task for the county council and the population as a whole going forward. Carbon sequestration is something that I deal with quite a lot in my real-life job as a farmer, and a lot of the environmental land management schemes that are coming forward at the moment. But I just want to draw to the attention, there are some people who are going for quick fixes, and it's a Wild West cowboy world out there at the moment with no agreed manner of, what's the word, judging the amount of carbon that's being sequestrated into the land. And I know that my neighbouring county councillor, John Francis, and I have about half a dozen solar farms planned on land that is probably better served for food production than it is for energy production. And it's one of the things that's going through the process at the moment, that if a solar farm comes in at less than 50 megawatts, which is about 160 acres, that it goes to the local planning authority. But if it's above that, it goes to the Secretary of State. Well, when you have six within 49.9 megawatts within about three miles of each other, it shows that people are out there looking to promise the landowner a quick book on converting his farm into solar. It's mainly about where the power lines are, whether they can feed into the industry or not. The people that are doing it quite often are not the ones that build the solar farm and manage it. And although they will sign into legal documents and a whole host of other things, they do not talk about the tax implications to the landowner or anything else. I have to declare, I'm vice president of the CPRE in Staffordshire, and their view is quite strongly that solar panels are best placed on buildings. And as a county council, and a lot of district and borough councillors here, we should be thinking about when local plans are written up, that solar panels should be on those premises. We are facing an issue about the electric network, the national grid not being sufficient to take the power to individual houses, to power electric vehicles. So I'm just standing up today saying, well done to Simon and the Cabinet for the paper that you brought forward today. But don't think that this is the end of it. This is the start of a major project, probably over the next 20 years. It's beyond COP23 in Dubai. This is something that affects the people of Staffordshire. And I just have to remind you of the four motifs on each corner of this building. You know, there's coal, mining, pottery, it's all very energy-sufficient or taking in. There's only one poor old farmer somewhere up there, and the green industry, who's the one that's going to prop this lot up.
councillor David Smith.
Councillor David Smith. Thank you, Chairman. I don't intend, Chairman, which I've done many occasions in this council, to bang on about issues relating to climate change, only to say that we have the most fantastic number of opportunities throughout this county for us to be able to put forward the most fantastic argument for how we are the greenest county around. But, Chairman, there are various problems that we have. We are looking at the possibility of the number of quarries that we have coming to a conclusion. They will have 10 years of management, and then they fall over an edge. We have the opportunity to talk to quarry owners about the green further use of a quarry, which makes it something which is useful to the community and recognizes the problems of needing to provide green energy, and also other services that a quarry could provide looking at the long term. Also, Chairman, when we look at the various problems, in my division, I have a 30-point electric vehicle charging centre, which is about to go to planning. I'm horrified to find from the developer that the national grid want to charge 2.5 million, two and a half million pounds to connect that to the national grid. I think that, Chairman, shows that the national grid has no concern whatsoever for how the community is going to be offering better opportunities for people to be a green community. And I think that we need as a council to be very much aware of that. But on particular good news, I would perhaps like to just mention that in my division, we are shortly about to invite the chairman of the council to come and plant our 500,000th tree. 500,000 trees in my division. I would welcome every other member of this council to add to that the number of trees that we are planting, because it makes a massive argument, and I think that that's a single success story that we have to deal with. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Smith, and thank you for the invitation. We are polishing the shovel as we speak. Apparently, we have a very fancy one. Councillor John Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to be brief, just to follow on what Philip was talking about, solar panels are great, but we're in the northern hemisphere here, and we're in the middle of the country. So I've had speed indicator devices put up that are solar-powered. This week, they haven't worked because there ain't enough sunlight. So the solar-powered blimming speed indicator lights are not working because there ain't enough juice in the blimming things. The other thing is, to put solar panels in, A, they manufacture in China, with a lake half as big as Wales, full of pollutants from the manufacture of the blimming things, plastic, they deteriorate over time. What are they going to do with them? The only thing they can do with them is put them in landfill. The other thing, yeah, what was it, quarry? The other thing is that the distribution network in this country, we used to have a company years ago called the CEGB, which is a central electricity generating board. That was a major contributor to the distribution of power and generation of power in this country. The demise of that is a result of market forces, and it's created nothing but a major problem. We ain't got enough distribution networks in this country to cover. If everybody bought electricity tomorrow, it wouldn't work. There's a lot of houses and terrace houses, where are they going to charge them? They don't know yet. So we've got a major company that we used to have in Stafford, which used to produce distribution network material, namely switchgear and transmission stuff. That company doesn't exist. We're going to have to import it all, because we don't make it in this country anymore, so we're going to have to import it all. There's some serious issues here, and we'll never be able to do without oil for at least 100 years plus, because oil lubricates industry. Without oil, you ain't got any lubrication. What are you going to go back to? Kill your sperm whales to get the oil to lubricate? Because that's what we used to use years ago. So there's some serious issues here that need thinking about and navigating around. So it isn't just a done deal, and as Philip has alluded to, farmers are in front of the game, because they don't plough anymore, they inject the fields, which reduces their carbon footprint. So, Chairman, I welcome this, and I think Simon's done a brilliant job on it, but there's some big issues to come. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Mark Whinneyton.
Thank you. Yes, it is another farmer. Philip's quite right, we are at the heel end of all these things that happen. I welcome the Climate Change Action Plan. Brilliant, it's what we need. But I think that we need to sort of have one or two different policies as a county council as we go forwards. Now, I was very antagonistic towards wind farms 10, 20 years ago. They were out of vogue with everybody, but no one ever mentions onshore wind farms at the moment. They're quick to deliver, and half the price, or a third of the price of offshore wind farms. So that's something we need to have a revisit, and the same with solar panels. And Philip's absolutely bang on the money. The solar powers aren't being put there because it's a nice piece of ground that faces south. They're there because central networks, and they are back again now, it's now central networks, not Western Power, haven't got the substations and the capacity. Now, to my mind, if you're going to create energy, green energy, it should be on brownfield sites, houses, buildings, with just pets, I don't know whether they're having solar panels, but those sort of buildings are the ones which we need to see generation. And let's see, on those brownfield sites that are next to conurbations, that the power is used straight into the people that need it. Because as John will tell you as an engineer, if you start moving electricity up and down the country, the losses are something like 20 or 30%, and that denigrates the whole reason of having it. And in terms of, I don't know, who mentioned that farmers aren't ploughing anymore, or, well, actually, they aren't doing anything anymore because of climate change. We can't even walk on the fields at the moment, it is so wet. So if you could have a word with him up there and say, can we have a bit less rain? It would be appreciated, and the roads as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Whinneyton. Maybe you ought to have brought that point up before Father Graham left the premises. I think there was an appropriate time there. councillor Sayed Hussain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I always welcome the local initiatives about the climate change. And Simon, I'm always with you, as you know that. We will always strive to have the betterment for our county. But sometimes I feel that we need to send a strong message to those who are on top, above our pay grade, especially when they go to COP28, Mr. Chairman. Different, you know, the aeroplane jets or anything, Prime Minister going by one jet, then the Foreign Minister going by another jet, and many more.
councillor Hussain, I've allowed really a broad spectrum on this, and I'm aware that everybody's giving quite a strong opinion on their green issue. We have no input on COP22, or the aeroplanes and everything that goes down there. So I'd ask you, wherever possible, please, try and keep this in Staffordshire.
Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Hussain.
I'm grateful, Chairman. As a taxpayer, this is my concern, I've shared with you.
Thank you.
But I would like to see more green agent, but genuine one. Thank you for your advice.
And thank you so much. Thank you, councillor Hussain. councillor Mark Deville.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, colleagues. Some really good points being raised today, and I think it's a really, really good debate around this massively important subject, Chairman. Totally agree with Mr. Yates with your comments. It's absolutely essential that our extensive property estate is best fit for the people who use the buildings, that it's best, we always look at the best use of the facilities. We always look at offering best value for money for our Staffordshire taxpayers, and we always look for the very, very best for our environment. So you're right, raising these points, Mr. Yates. You're also right in your comment around our conversion to LED lighting. And we have made great progress within the county council on converting to the more friendly LED lighting. And you're also right, I've agreed with you three times already today. You're also right, Mr. Yates, to say that we can't be complacent. And if I may just offer you assurance, and all colleagues assurance, Mr. Chairman, that there be no complacency whatsoever in the ongoing work that we do around the environmental friendliness of our buildings and our estates, the best use of our buildings and our estate, and achieving very best value for our Staffordshire taxpayers.
Well, the level of agreement there is quite emotional, councillor Deville. councillor Philip Hudson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Colleagues, there's one word I haven't heard mentioned today at all, and that is the word hydrogen. That is why I'm so pleased that a local company to my division and Philip's division are investing billions of pounds into developing the hydrogen engine. It's better for our rural communities, it will help our farmers plough the fields when they can get out there. And also, it gives us an alternative to electric vehicles, because I'm not convinced that electric vehicles is the future. We're already saying we can't produce enough electricity. And whereas if we introduce the hydrogen engines, you can go to a local station and fill up. If we have a power out, which we've had several times in places like Scotland, what happens then? When everybody gets up in the morning, the cars aren't going, and they can't get to work? And if we have a big breakdown on the motorway, and people are there for hours and hours with their cars, and they run out of juice, as it were, for electricity? So I very much welcome hydrogen, and that's, I think, is the way forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
councillor Johnny McMinn.
Thank you, Chair. I pressed a button because I saw that we were on a very positive high note to begin with, and then we found ourselves in a position where we were being quite depressed about it. And I think we need to finish on a high note, because I think we can get there, we can get there, because we have to get there. And I think that there's an issue about technology here. The technology advance, 20 years ago, many people in the green movement felt that technology would not get us out of this mess. But now, the feeling very much is that technology really can be a game changer and can help us. There's a thing that John Francis mentioned, which I just want to touch on briefly, and that's the green paradox, the idea that you can't have green energy unless you damage the environment, for want of a better word. But even that's changing. There is a lithium mine in the United States that's virtually carbon neutral. There's a cobalt mine in Argentina that's virtually carbon neutral. Even though we've got to look locally, the fact is, we've got to look outside as well and see what's going on. And I entirely agree about hydrogen. One has to be quite ambivalent about what energy it is, as long as it doesn't spit out greenhouse gases. There are five now companies in the United Kingdom, they're small, that are producing green hydrogen. Hydrogen becomes in three forms, green, blue, and brown, depending on how much carbon dioxide it spits out and getting there. The green stuff is carbon neutral. We can do this. And I appeal to councillor Tag to look outside and see what's going on, and to help try and bring it in to our local community. We can get this done. Thank you. and to help try and bring it in to our local community. We can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McMann. Councillor Tag, I will leave you to pull all that together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for all of the comments. I will pass those on to the team, I'm sure Daryl will too, about the hard work that's gone on over the last year and the years previously to get us to where we've got to at the moment. I think we've also seen today members pointing out some of the challenges and also the opportunities that come from this agenda. So we'll certainly be working on those over the next few years as we really build momentum behind our plans. And it's really encouraging. We've made significant strides towards, obviously, our goal, which we set out in the Climate Emergency of 2019 debate that we had in this council. And that's that headline 50% reduction in emissions. And the county council's commitment to that is also set out clearly in its strategic plan as well, which we're working to in every area and operation of the council. It's key and central to that. The annual report which went to Cabinet, which is before us today, tracks our progress towards becoming net zero by 2050 and also highlights and celebrates some of the progress we've made as a council and also with our partners in the boroughs and districts through the Staffordshire Sustainability Board, which colleague councillor Yates is the vice chair of now. And this is the third report we've had since declaring that climate emergency in 2019. Some key highlights, Mr. Chairman, which I'll point out are that, as councillor Deville pointed out, the decarbonisation of our buildings. And I'll just highlight one, which is the contribution of the Kingston Centre when it was refurbished as a primary school. And we managed to get 795,000 funding from the Public Sector Decarbonisation Fund to help us to do that, to retrofit, including six air source heat pumps, high insulation levels, and solar PV installation on the building as well. And that's expected to save, Mr. Chairman, 150 tonnes of carbon emissions annually as well. The council's Highways Department, under the leadership of councillor Williams, is running a pilot project switching to hydrogenated vegetable oil, HVO biofuel, to get their, for their gridding fleet and also their forklift fleet as well. This is reducing carbon emissions by 60 tonnes in the three months compared to conventional diesel and also decreasing pollution levels by up to 84%. So there's a double win there on that. Our Climate Change Members' Fund has continued to pay dividends for our community with over 73 grants last year totaling over £85,000 for community groups, schools, and charities, including LED lights, treatment, increasing insulation, and encouraging active travel through installation of bike racks in schools and community centres. Now, just for members' awareness, the deadline for this year's applications is at the end of this financial year. And we've already had a high number of applications. We're just encouraging members in the last couple of weeks of the year to get those final applications in. Also, Mr. Chairman, last year, we spent over £5 million, which was awarded to us for home efficiency improvements for residents in 427 properties. Not only cutting the emissions from those buildings, but also saving on energy bills at a time when bills are rising. Our Climate Change Action Fund, which was appended to the action plan, appended to the annual report, sorry, has five key areas for the next few years up to 2025. And that is carbon reduction, carrying on that good work, air quality improvements, natural environment through our natural environment strategy, which we're going to be taking through Cabinet in January, and also our nature recovery strategy, which we're working across the county, districts, and the city to deliver. And also waste reduction, and also behavioural change in communications to get the message out there to our communities. And this allows us, this plan allows us to track and scrutinise our progress as we make our journey towards this. And it's an important part of the agenda for members to look at and see what we're up to, where we're going to, what we're measuring ourselves against. And there also is a community impact strategy attached to that as well, which is a key, important thing. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm really pleased that we've reached that significant point. I think as members have already said, we're not resting on our laurels because there's still a long way to go. But I think where we are at the moment, I think it's a really good track that we're on. Thank you again to the officers involved that have delivered this and to all the members of the Cabinet or all climate change Cabinet members as well. We're not resting on our laurels, as I say, and our ambition is clear in our plan, and we seek to deliver it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tag. Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sometimes at the Christmas council meeting, you think that some councillors are trying to get words and phrases in for a bet. And I never thought I'd hear the phrase sperm whales in a council speech. But I have, and whoever bet you that you couldn't get that phrase in, John, you've won the bet. I just wanted to point out a couple of things, just to, in line with councillor McMann, lift the mood. If you've read any articles about climate change investments, and the Financial Times is a very good source of this, you will see the amount of global investment going into renewables is soaring. I think just under 2 trillion this year compared to what it has been previously, and it's on the way up. Global shocks like the war in Ukraine remind us that a reliance on a source of oil is an inappropriate thing to do. And this diversification into renewables is being driven by a sense that shocks do occur. It is also very good of councillor Hudson to point out the hydrogen work that's going on. But you forgot to mention the company, councillor Hudson, as you were talking. It's JCB, which is in your division and Philip's division. Absolutely outstanding work on hydrogen energy. And also Toyota, just over the border, employing thousands of Staffordshire residents at its factories working on hydrogen energy, and our academic lead at Keel University doing the research that's needed. So, Mr. Chairman, this is an excellent news item. I thank councillor Tag for his sterling work, not just here within the council, but also as leader of Newcastle Underline Borough Council at the Leaders' Board, being the representative, flying the flag for the agenda, not just here in the council, but countywide across our district, borough, and indeed our city colleagues up in Stoke. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor White, for a terrific summary on what was certainly an interesting debate. Moving on to item five of the leading statement, which is the Staffordshire Employment and Skills Strategy. Councillor Connor Wallman.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I just want to take this, use this item to congratulate Burton and South Derbyshire College, which is very, very close to my division and used by many, many students in there. They've been rated outstanding by Ofsted on every single measure. Not just one, not just two, every single one. And whilst the rating is just a rating, let me just dwell on one of the parts of the report, which says that almost all learners and apprentices made rapid and sustained progress because of high-quality teaching and coaching they routinely receive. How wonderful is that for that college to receive? It's clearly a wonderful endorsement of all the hard work that the teachers, the tutors, the students have put in over those last few years, and I wish the college very well in the future. Thank you very much, Chair.
Councillor Ashed Aswell.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to ask the Cabinet member if there's any specific target industries or sectors that are being prioritised under the Employment and Skills Strategy. Because it's been widely recognised, like most sectors are facing shortages. The high-tech and engineering construction sectors are facing a skills crisis like never before. What more could the council do to plan and collaborate with local businesses and educational institutions to ensure their art skills and trainings are available for these sectors to combat these skill shortages? Thank you.
Councillor Mois O'Sullivan.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, everybody. I certainly welcome this report, and I thank Philip White for bringing it to you, or to us. I'd like to just share what, if you like, the outcomes and successes that we're experiencing locally in Cannock Chase. We have a good partner with South Staffs College. But when I stepped back probably three or four years ago, there was a lot of facilities that, if I'm being honest, were tired. So they needed help and support. And working in partnership with this council and others, what they've done over probably the last three years is actually build their offer. And I'll share with you numbers because that's what it's about, what's happening now. Particularly in the construction area, we all know that in construction, there's a lack of skills, a lack of apprenticeships and so forth. But I'm going to surprise you when I tell you that. At Cannock now, we have 293 students attending Cannock College. And there's a breakdown, bricks, bricklaying, carpentry, electric, and plumbers. Now, if I step back probably three, four years ago, it wasn't hitting 100. And in fairness to students, they had to go elsewhere because of the better facilities. So I'm delighted to be able to say that at the minute, we're growing, all right, percentages to do us a credit, but you've got to be realistic. There's a 71% increase in the construction facility there. The other thing that I've seen on the ground, and this is you touch and you feel, is that job fairs. There used to be probably a couple a year. Now, they're every four months. And they take place in Cannock and Rusely. And what we've seen is the strength in numbers of physical people attending and also the partners. And finally, I look, and this goes back to agenda item one, because it's all in the numbers, isn't it, and claimants? And Cannock is holding steady at 3.3. We want obviously to see it better and lower. But I have to say, we are going in the right direction. Thank you, Philip, for the great sterling work and support that you've given and will continue to give, I'm sure. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sutherland, a great advocate of Cannock Chase. Councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chair. Chairman, as an honorary doctor of the Staffordshire University, I would like to share a secret with this council. So shh, don't tell anybody. But in this county, not only in this county, but in Stafford, Staffordshire University has 2,500 nurses in training, in degree courses. We seem very, very quiet about that. So I must ask all of you to keep the secret because we don't want anyone to know about it. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Smith, the secret is safe with us, trust me. Councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chairman. So this is a very important complementary strategy to our overall economic strategy for the county. We were talking a little bit earlier about productivity, and the key driver of productivity is a high-skilled workforce, which is one of the principal reasons why we've delivered a distinct employment and skills strategy for the county. In terms of the detail of the strategy, you can read it, it's published. I'd imagine a lot of members will have already read it. I'll come to the point about specific sectors in a moment. But I just want to talk about the overall aims for a moment. So there are five overall aims for the strategy. The first is to create an aspirational and active workforce. The second is to provide inspirational careers advice so that people properly understand the opportunities that are available to them, and most importantly, how to get to where they want to in terms of their skills journey. The third is developing technical skills to drive productivity and growth. The fourth is innovation. Skills is a key driver of innovation. You need high skills to be able to participate in innovation activity. And the final one is to create a place of learning within Staffordshire. And that's not to say, of course, that we're not well along the journey on each of those strands. And in terms of creating a place of learning, I must just add my congratulations to Burton and South Derbyshire College in becoming the second of our four Staffordshire county-based colleges to achieve outstanding in all areas. Our other colleges, so Newcastle and Stafford College Group are the other outstanding group. Our other colleges are rated good by Ofsted, as indeed is Stoke-on-Trent College as well. So wherever learners in Staffordshire go, their skills provision, their FE provision is extremely strong, as is the provision from our universities. Regarding priority sectors, they are identified in the strategy, so I do encourage you to delve into it, to look at some of the detail around this. But those priority sectors include engineering and advanced manufacturing, including specifically automation, AI, and machine learning. The construction sector, including modern methods such as automation, AI, and retrofitting. Advanced logistics, a very large part of our economy in Staffordshire, but we are keen to drive the advanced end of logistics. So the IT operation with a warehouse attached, for want of a better description. Health and social care, a common topic of discussion here. And the digitisation of services and new technologies. The other thing that runs through all of that is green skills as well. We have huge demand for that. We've heard much discussion here today about hydrogen. It's one of the areas where Staffordshire is leading the way. And I very much hope that the government might take some interest in perhaps developing an extension to our Institute of Technology, which would be a hydrogen skills strand to that, something that we've already discussed with government ministers and look forward to taking further discussion. Which brings me on to the final point, which is about discussions with ministers and government. Because the main reason, practical reason, why we need to develop our own distinct skills strategy is identification of need for when we are having discussions with government around skills funding. Now, unfortunately, skills funding at the moment comes in lots of penny packets and bidable items. And we in this chamber have long called for that skills budget to be devolved to us here in Staffordshire. The evidence in terms of how well we work together as a partnership, in terms of delivering the skills needs that our businesses have, is clear. We are joined up, we are capable. We would be a lot more efficient if the money was delivered to us here so that we could spend it locally through the prioritisations identified in this strategy. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor White. Moving on to item six on the leading statement, which is the Treasury Management Report for the off-year, ended the 30th of September 2023. Apologies. Councillor Mois O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair. I think it'd be remiss if we didn't look at the final paragraph where the Cabinet noted that this council made a repayment of £50 million alone. So that means that we are saving £199,000 per annum, that we can invest without further debt. That tells you how prudent and smart this council is at managing money. So my congratulations to Ian Parry and to Rob Salmon and the Treasury team. This is the second occasion that we've been in this position to do it. I challenged at the last time, could we do this at least once a year? And the look I got back from, he won't mind me saying he's not here today, but Rob Salmon was, you've got to be joking. This is just a one-off opportunity, but I'm delighted it wasn't. And that's why I want to make the point today. Congratulations to the organisation and the Treasury team. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor O'Sullivan. I have no further speakers, so I'm going to call in the leader, councillor Alan White.
Thank you for those comments. It is worthy of note that we are paying back that debt and as a result of that, paying less interest. We want to minimise our interest payments wherever possible. We do also try to minimise our praise for Rob Salmon because we like to keep him sharp. But notwithstanding that fact, it is a good job by the team, and we're very grateful for the work. I think Philip Atkins would have said previously, and to these Treasury Management reports, it's not the return on our money we're interested in, it's the return of our money. And if we recall 15 years ago with the Icelandic bank crisis, some councils lost significant amounts of money. And as a result of that, these reports were instigated, which means that we are always keeping a careful eye on the return that we're getting from our money and guaranteeing that we get it back, most importantly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven on the leading statement, which is the local and national government budgets. Councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does the leader agree with the local government association that it was hugely disappointing that the Autumn Statement failed to provide the funding needed to protect those services which everyone relies on in our communities on a day-to-day basis? There was no mention of children's services, funding for early years, and support for pupils with special educational needs. Spiralling costs in children's social care and in adult social care were not met by any new investment. So although I congratulate the council on reaching a balanced budget, does the leader agree with me that it is vital that the government deals with the funding crisis it has created in local government?
Councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. This is an interesting paragraph, and we all have seen a lot of councils heading towards Section 114. And this council isn't heading towards a Section 114. That is because, and I can say this, because back in 2009, we were looking at not a very good situation, and we had to make some tough decisions. And the way that we did that was by transforming the county council's work in an innovative way. It wasn't about asking for more money, it was about using the money that we got wisely. And if you think about it, the things that we want are a happy, healthy, crime-free county for our residents to live in, with jobs and employment for those that can do it. Because people in work are happier and healthier, and they commit less crime. I can remember a time when county councils relied on government for about 85% of their funding, 85, 90%. And because of the gearing effect, that meant that as the government pulled back their funding, and I just seem to recollect, it was after 97 and before 2010. I wonder who was in control then? That it meant that if we had had an additional two, out of 100, if you can imagine, there's £85 that came from government. If we wanted two or three pounds extra, it went on the £15. And in 2003, this county council put up council tax by 15% so that we could balance the books, because the then-government wasn't giving us any money. I can remember saying in 98 that those who were in control at the time, who thought that the train from London was going to come full of gold. Well, I think the train was still at Euston, and it hadn't been loaded up with any gold. So my advice to, and I'm an LGA peer, I have to chat with other councils and leaders, is you've got to start thinking about, if you're in a really dire position, think about what your county council or city council is doing of both political persuasions, and think about what your residents actually need. Think very hard. It's their money that you're spending. It's their hard-earned money that you are allocating. It's not an easy task. And I think one of the problems about politics at the moment, Chairman, is if we're not careful, we do to short-termism, rather than our current Prime Minister's view, and I agree with him, that you should look to the long term. Because you cannot fix this in a matter of days. Back in 2009, when we took control, the thought process back then was that, well, it was worse. Staffordshire was the worst-performing sub-region of the worst-performing region in the country. We weren't enjoying the good times that London was doing. We were down in the depths. We're now fortunate because of good management by staff and councillors and members, and allocating at our communities and spending their money wisely and helping to help themselves with a hand up, not a hand out, that we are in a good position. But we must continue to transform our services and be innovative and take advantage of the new technological advances that are coming and the changes that are coming in our world. So I think local, national government update is good. We could do with some help on children's services. Why there is this increase in looked-after children is a bit beyond what the county council does. We are dealing with what is happening in society. Thank you, Chairman.
Perfect timing, councillor Atkins. Councillor Ross Ward.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Cabinet Member for Finances and Resources, along with the rest of the Cabinet and our officers, for their diligence and hard work in ensuring that we are on track to deliver a balanced budget. In the current climate, this is a masterful achievement and worthy of our thanks on behalf of the people of Staffordshire Mallands, Staffordshire, sorry. However, it would be remiss of me not to contrast this with what is happening by the now Labour-controlled Staffordshire Mallands Council, some of whom are with us today. I raise it here because I think it's really important and it's a strong indicator of what may happen should they ever regain control of this authority. A minority labour group took over Staffordshire Mallands back in May, thanks to a miasmic coalition with a number of supposed independents. Then what happened? Oh, nothing. Nothing for six months. However, after six months of inaction, they finally went into overdrive last week and delivered what can only be described as a masterclass of self-appreciation. Their first tangible act as a council was to award themselves, and it's a good job most of you sitting down, a 44% increase in allowances. 44%. Over the term of their office, this is equivalent to an extra £400,000 of additional uncostly spending from the budget. To give some context to this, the previous Conservative administration held the allowance at the same level for getting on for 18 years. This low-cost approach helped the Mallands into a sound financial position. But in their first act as a Labour coalition, they have helped themselves to £400,000, £400,000 of taxpayers' money, initially from reserves, taken from reserves and then presumably from cuts to services. There were even gasps from Labour MPs, as this was mentioned in the House of Commons by our local MP, as they were aghast at the 44% that was recommended and approved. But worst of all of this was the convoluted series of excuses and reasons they trotted out for why they were trying to justify this rise. It was like trying to pick you through a James Joyce novel. They said, "It was our fault. It was our fault because we introduced the review. Well, we had a review in 2018, and we rejected it because we thought it was unfair, it was wrong. It's our fault for grandstanding and playing politics by not increasing the allowance for 18 years. That's right, we were playing politics by being consistently not spending the Malands' money on ourselves." I'm quite proud of that fact, to be honest. The Tories don't understand how hard it is to be a councillor and work full-time. It's unbelievable. It's stopping young people engaging in politics, despite the fact that the Staffordshire Mallands has now got the youngest demographic in its history of councillors. We're only doing it to encourage more people to stand in 2027, and yet it's backdated to the very first day they took office in 2024. How is that encouraging future generations? It feels to me like someone's trying to line their pockets. And finally, the best excuse of all, one that has afforded them a new name across the Mallands, and this is quite extraordinary. They're now known as L'Oire Labour, as one of the councillors stood up and said that the £400,000 was worth taking because they were worth it.
Councillor Nigel Yates. I have called you councillor Yates, councillor Nigel Yates. You have.
Thank you, Chair. Well. First of all, I applaud councillor Ward because I thought he lost the ability to speak when he came to Stafford, and he only spoke at Staffordshire Mallands, so it's nice to hear from you. The Conservatives initiated this review because they saw the issues with the allowance scheme in Staffordshire Mallands, and actually lobbied quite strongly the then-opposition members to make sure that they had support when the obvious was going to happen. I think the Conservatives in 2018 were too scared of the existing strong leader to actually step out of line. It was also the case that when the Conservative administration were in power, I think all but one Conservative, and I really don't know what they did wrong, had a special responsibility allowance, including special responsibility allowances for committees which didn't meet. So when the independent assessor, reviewer, whatever you want to call them.
Is this related to the item?
Well, I think in the context of.
Mr. Atkins, just take a seat just a second so we can sort the point of order out. Thank you. Thank you. So you're not.
Sit down.
Yes, please, yeah.
Oh, gosh.
Thank you. The point of order has a level of validity to it, and if the officer wants to give me some advice, I will. But it was brought up by councillor Ward, and I'm allowing a couple of minutes just to him to give an answer to that. But we are just checking. I agree with you, I don't think we're going to take any more after this. I think that's quite right to do this. I'm getting a nod from the monitoring officer, so he's happy to do that. But I'm going to give you, shall we try and summarise so this doesn't go on and it doesn't become a debate about the Malands? Thank you.
Go straight to a conclusion. The situation we're left in at the moment is that the special responsibility allowances have been dramatically reduced over the favers' grade, and we are currently out of eight districts and boroughs with the changes which we are. We are still sixth. And I understand that some of the Conservatives will be moving to other Conservative councils to get better allowances, because that is the situation. We are sixth out of eight. So don't think it's anything which isn't other than bringing something right, which would have been done a long time if you had the strength to stand up to your leader.
Councillor De Ville, I presume you're quite capable of bringing this back to this chamber, thank you very much.
Bringing this back to a positive level, if I may, and just to say that I am so proud, and I'm sure all others are, to be part of Staffordshire County Council, who spends its money, despite all the challenges, spends its money in exactly the right places. I was privileged, Chairman, earlier this week, together with one of my Cabinet colleagues, to visit Horton Lodge School up in Rudgeard. If councillor Atkins and councillor Yates are listening, it's in their districts. They know a lot about Horton Lodge School. Now, I learnt a lot at this meeting, Chairman. I was also privileged to meet the wonderful staff, even more privileged to meet the wonderful and beautiful children that are at that school. So I learnt a lot, but I came away thinking, I'd got a warm feeling, Chairman, coming away from Horton Lodge on Tuesday, that I'm part of a council that does care. I'm part of a council that despite the massive challenges that we face and the ongoing challenges we face, we spend our money wisely, as Mr. Atkins says. We spend our money wisely, we spend our money in the right places, we look after the people who need it most, and Chairman will continue to do so.
Councillor Tom Luffery-Rudd.
Thank you, Chairman. Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
Thankfully, you will understand I'm not going to talk about Staffordshire Mallands because local finances in local government has been an issue recently. I note that the county councils, the organisation which the leader himself signed, talked about the pressures on our services. But we should be positive. This is one of the few councils in the West Midlands area that is not facing economic downturn, economic disaster. I know this because part of my day job is working with addiction in Birmingham, and I'm looking at the consequences. And local government finances has been, ever since I've got elected, it's like an up-and-down jumping when it comes to highways and buses, it's a begging bowl. And I also would like to endorse what the West, I hope that we get a situation like the West Midlands has where we don't have to do that. So I would hope that a solution can be done where the government can, in one day, give us a final settlement so we don't have to do this every year. But, I repeat, Staffordshire is a well-managed, well-run financial council. Our reputation as a council and its leaders is good. And I don't believe that, talking about, when we come to our allowances, we do not, we only raise it by what we need to. And I think that we need to recognise that Staffordshire's economy and the well work of this council, which has been under many, many years, and under increasing pressures of a rural county, Covid and the pandemic, is something which we praise because we are a shining example locally of what you can do with a sustainable budget. And I think that's something that you probably don't expect someone who is independent to say, but that's what I can see on the ground. People, my residents, talk to me about, yes, we have challenges, but I think we should be looking at them with a positive outlook because at the moment, and I'm aware that until the government settlement is okay, we have to manage by year by year. And ever since I've been sitting in this council, this council has managed to do that. Thank you.
Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sometimes I do think we're in a Biddorf Town Council meeting or a Malands meeting, but you have granted a great deal of latitude this morning, Mr. Chairman, and that is extremely generous of you because you are full of Christmas spirit, undoubtedly.
Thank you, leader.
Look, this item has to acknowledge the reality of local and national government budgets. For us not to acknowledge our circumstances, I think the public would look at us and go, "Well, are you deluded? We're not. We're thoroughly grounded." And this item is meant to acknowledge that grounding that we have here at the council. Councillor Atkins talked about the budgets over the years. I've been a councillor for a long time, and I remember in 2004, something called the Gersham Savings coming in, which reduced council's budget by 3% year-on-year. And I remember when they first came in thinking, "Oh, my goodness, how are we going to manage with 3% less next year and 3% less the year after?" And then the reductions came in very, very significantly because of the financial crisis. But we have cut our cloth accordingly, we've reformed our services, we've restructured, and we've delivered effective and efficient assistance for the people of Staffordshire. We know that, because people will have seen the Secretary of State, Michael Gove, stand in front of the Local Government's Association and the County Council Network and say, "I feel your pain." He also says that he empathises with our circumstances, he acknowledges clearly the challenges we face in adult social care, children's social care and special educational needs budgets. And we were given a clear sense that there would be an acknowledgement of that in the Autumn Statement. And this is on the record, so I'm not saying anything that people didn't know. But nothing did come through in the Autumn Statement, and I think what we do need to do is continue our lobbying effort with ministers and secretaries of state to make sure that they understand the challenges that we face. Many of the burdens that we have, many of the responsibilities we have are passed down from us, from government through legislation. Those need to be funded. Special educational needs provision is one area in particular, and the high needs block, which puts stress on lots of local authorities' budgets. We only take money from people's pockets to spend it wisely, and we do so every year with a heavy heart. This isn't the meeting where we talk about the medium-term financial strategy and council tax setting, but I know every single one of you as councillors understand the responsibility that you take when you vote for the council tax setting. 1% of council tax for this authority yields up £4.3 million. That's a lot of money, and it's money we have to take from people's pockets, and not one of us in this chamber does so lightly, and not one of us wants to see that money being frittered away or spent inefficiently because it's irresponsible of us to do so, and we need to make sure that the money we spend on behalf of those 880,000 people out there is spent sensibly. There are difficult decisions that this authority has taken over the past 14 years, really difficult decisions. Some of them have been hugely unpopular. I know I was a portfolio holder for health and care for many years, and I had to make some of those unpopular decisions. But there are other authorities who shied away from those decisions, and those authorities are the ones that are now having to deal with the consequences of not taking decisions. I remember having a meeting with a representative from the bus services who said, "You know, you've had to do some difficult things with decisions around bus services. Your neighbouring authority hasn't made those decisions, but they will have to shortly." And so it's come to pass that they find themselves in difficult financial circumstances. Is this where we would like to be? Would we like to be able to do more? Of course we would, of course we would. We have to cut our cloth, we have to deliver our services efficiently, and that is precisely what we vow to do, that is precisely what we actually do on a day-to-day basis as councillors and representatives of the people of Staffordshire. A tough job, you're all part of the solution, and I hope that this paragraph in the Leader's Statement acknowledges the challenges that we all face in delivering local and national budgets. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We move on to Item Eight on the Leader's Statement, which is Good News for Stafford. Can I remind members, the item is Good News for Stafford, not a long, protected display of Ed ATS2. Councillor Gillian Pardsey.
Thank you, Chair. This statement raises the issue of better transport links, Chair. Could we please have some reassurance that that will also address the issue of bus driver shortage that we have? shortage that we have? And, uh, yes, it is good news for traf, uh, for Stafford, following the welcome success of the £20 million bid, and the new administration at Stafford Borough Council is working hard to make sure that that money is used wisely, to make significant improvements in Stafford, especially in the town centre. So there are exciting times ahead, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Pardsey. Um, councillor Caroline Troubridge.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Um, well, this is absolutely excellent news for Stafford. Um, and as this report said by Alan, that it was, uh, many partners that are running together to create the Stafford Station Gateway. This is right on my doorstep, so I've been involved in this strategy and the vision for many years. When this application failed the funding on the first round, I was extremely concerned. To have this developed piecemeal would have been disastrous for Stafford. So I must say a huge, huge thank you to Thea Clark, the MP for Stafford, who listened to all my concerns about why we lost the funding in the first round. She went straight to Parliament pushing for Stafford, as she always does, and this £20 million levelling up fund is now absolutely excellent. It's a 28-acre hectare site which could absolutely transform Stafford's station and the gateway into Stafford. So while I'm talking about the MP, I'd also like to congratulate her on her new position as private secretary to the HM Treasury. What a huge position already, and forgetting Speaker of the Year in Parliament. But what I really want to say is, this is all about working together, the borough, the council, the local MPs, to achieve greater things. Working together is how we achieve these great things. And just as was mentioned about transport, I know Sir Gavin Williams is pushing hard for the extra transport going up Stone Way. So I'd like to thank all partners concerned here for delivering something great for Stafford. Thank you.
Councillor Mort Winton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Uh, again, I echo, uh, what's been said before, uh, and I will say HS2 because this has come from a HS2 fund and it's part of the, uh, levelling up with the cancellation of it. So I've said HS2 twice now, uh, and I'll say HS2 one more time, and that is that, uh, as a county council and as a borough council, we fought to keep the handsake of link in phase one. That's still there, it means that we will now get, uh, javelin trains or classic compatible trains that come into Stafford and, and the, and the surrounding areas and increase trade. That's really important because that backs up what we've got here. We've got the High Street Fund, uh, huge High Street Fund of £20 million. We've got £20 million here towards, uh, development of, and I'll use old, old school measurements, 70 acres of brownfield land. Um, and that's going to be developed, as it says in here, for, for some fantastic, uh, um, mind-blown use, 900 homes, 30,000 feet of commercial, a multi-storey car park, retail and leisure. It's brilliant news for Stafford, uh, and I think the county officers, the borough officers should be, well, should be thanked. The members on both side, on both councils that did this and got this money in should be thanked. It will be great to see the, the county town start to regain its status as, uh, one of the best county towns in Staffordshire and indeed in the UK. And just to remind, uh, councillor Pardsey, the heavy lifting on this, the applications, all the work that's been done, was done by a Conservative administration, and I do hope that the, the new Labour administration actually achieves something similar because we'll be watching them. Thank you, and it's not, it's not a Stafford Borough, uh, planning meeting before you say anything. Thank you.
Um, thank you. I, I liked your very gentle, um, rebellion there, councillor Winton. Um, I didn't say you couldn't mention HS2, I just said that the debate wasn't about HS2. Councillor Anne Ergela.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Chairman. And, uh, I've got to say, I am proud of this town of Stafford. Stafford is built on a floodplain, let's remember that. And if we, if we have any more rain in Stafford, then we'd be buying boats to get into the town, like alone buses. Having said that, I welcome the development with Stafford, within Stafford, and I want to share with you something that happened a few weeks ago, actually. I took a developer to see the chief exec at the, at the borough, uh, that are interested in buying Marks and Spencer's, and nothing today has happened on that. And I spoke to the people that are interested in buying it, and they are still interested. So I would ask the borough to really, uh, take that up as an initiative and, uh, moving forward, I hope it's taken seriously. I'm glad to hear about the development, but please, please, can I, the county council, can we have better bus services into town? Because we've got in the, the, all the developments and everything and, but we haven't got the services to get people. In my division, I've got 2,000 houses three miles from town with no bus service, so can we use some of the money that we're getting invested into the county council to give better bus services for the people in my division? Thank you very much, Chairman.
Councillor Jeremy Pitt.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Um, I have previously this morning talked about having a long-term vision, supported by a long-term plan and investment, investments being made to support them, uh, particularly in this case, in the county town. These investments don't come in the blink of an eye, they come around by a relentless pursuit of excellence over many years, having a strong vision and persuading others to join the journey along the way, including government, who can bring funding with them. The partnership between this council, the county council, and the borough council working to regenerate Stafford Station Gateway into an economic hive of activity from the existing wasteland that it is, creating oaseses in the process, is just another further example of that. We know the credentials that will be delivered through the gateway. Uh, we didn't really talk about some of the green credentials, including, uh, a green heartland along with low-carbon housing. But I'd like to pay a tribute to the officers who've been involved with this work, uh, throughout the long journey that we've been on. And I should, uh, also pay tribute to the work of one of my longstanding colleagues from the borough council, uh, borough councillor and ex-cabinet member, Mrs Frances Beatty, in all the work that she has done over the last 15 years in creating the vision and making it a reality as a cabinet member for planning and economic development in the borough. So this news, whilst it's welcome, is part of a longstanding journey, a journey that has taken into account regeneration of places like Victoria Park, um, the reopening of Stafford, uh, Staffordshire Shire Hall, um, the south, the Stafford Western Access Route. Investments of probably in excess of £200 million, and this most recent investment will open up, uh, a further investment from developers and, and businesses, uh, of probably another half a billion pounds. It is a really critical move by government. So do I welcome the news, uh, of the funding for the Stafford, uh, Station Gateway? Well, hell yes. Do I think the general public recognises where the real work was done? Absolutely. After all, Rome, or in this case Stafford, wasn't built in a day. Now, let's hope that those people who are crowing about all that they have done at this moment, having belatedly come to the party, don't royally mess it up, because that would be a, a, a huge mistake. This is an opportunity for once in a generation. We are not at the final destination, this is just another step, like Victoria Park, like the other things I've mentioned, on the way. The destination, however, is delivering the long-term vision and not just taking the credit for the work over the past decade. And, and increasingly, um, taking the points that the member made opposite, uh, this money isn't for, uh, for, uh, the town centre, this money is part of delivering the vision for regenerating the Stafford, Stafford Station Gateway. And it concerns me that the, uh, administration at local level don't fully understand this yet. Thank you.
Councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Um, yes, this is, um, this is very good news indeed for Stafford, and, um, it, um, it, it is also a success for this council. Um, we have, we have argued from the inception of the project that HS2 should not go ahead, um, and the cancellation of, um, of phase two, of HS2 is a blessed relief for many people in Staffordshire. There is still much unpicking to do, um, but the impact on this county over time, we should expect as a negative will reduce, and we will continue to work very hard to represent our residents' interests where they are impacted by it. But the good news of this benefit for Stafford comes as a result of hard work, credit where credit is due, hard work on the part of the previous Conservative administration at Stafford Borough Council, who wrote this bid. We should remember that all of the Love Free bids around the country that were accepted were bids into Love Two. They were the bids that were submitted then, um, that weren't successful, um, that were looked at again and funded through Love Free. So credit where credit is due for that. Um, also though, I will say, credit where credit is due for the new Labour administration, um, who now have the burden of responsibility for delivering this project well, along with the future High Streets Fund project, which again, the Conservative Stafford Borough Council administration won. Um, and, um, I'm, I'm pleased to say that our, our partnership working with the Borough Council has continued, um, since May in a really sensible way. Um, we've been providing support throughout this process from bid writing, um, through and out of the delivery of these projects. Um, we have our own projects in Stafford, as has been mentioned, so, um, the East Gate redevelopment, the History Centre, the Stafford Western Access Route, um, and, um, we will continue to work in strong partnership, um, because our priority is our residents, it's the people who live in Stafford and the people who live in Staffordshire. Um, politics is an argument about how to best deliver for those people. Um, when you get to the point of delivery, you get on with it, you work with the people who are there, that you need to work with, and we will, we will, we've always done that, we will always continue to do that. This is great news for Stafford, um, new housing that's much needed, new employment land, better transport links. Regarding bus transport, um, there is a separate, um, there is a separate element of the Network North Fund which relates to bus transport. Um, this announcement does not relate bus transport, but, um, we are talking to government about our needs in Staffordshire. Um, the, the recent bus service improvement plans were a disappointment for this county, and they were much more focused on, um, large urban areas. Um, we have needs of our own, as do other rural areas of this country, and we will continue to strongly advocate for that, particularly as there is now a sum of money, um, that can be used for that. Um, but let's celebrate this good news for our county. We're, we're now around £220 million of regeneration investment in Staffordshire as a whole at all four points of the compass. Um, it's fantastic news, um, for us. Uh, the one point I would say, a little bit like the skills, um, funding though, is, wouldn't it be nice if we didn't get this money in these pots, um, that descend upon us? Um, wouldn't it be nice if that funding was also devolved to Staffordshire for us to spend where we deem it most appropriate, um, which would include Stafford, of course, um, but might also include one or two other places who haven't benefited from any of these funds so far? Um, thank you very much, Chair. Excellent news.
Uh, moving on to our item nine on the leader's statement, which is investment in highways. Councillor Philip Hudson.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Um, I welcome this investment in our highways, and I'll be certainly knocking on the door of councillor White and Williams to spend some of the money in my division at Utoxeter. So why do we need it? Well, it's a, a growing and vibrant economy for industry, we've got tourism, we've got nearby Alton Towers, we've got the Utoxeter racecourse, and when the Staffordshire Borough Council make their mind up on what they're going to do with the maltings, there will be a need to get our residents safely into the town centre. So with that brings the cost of, uh, HGVs on my roads. Um, when the main network through Utoxeter was built years ago, it wasn't built for the road lorries that we have now, so there is a need to upgrade those, and I know that recently we have upgraded a roundabout at Waitrose, so thank you councillor Williams for your help on that. The potholes, yes, um, I've got quite a list of category threes to be done in Utoxeter, so I welcome the JCB pothole pro to be used. And, uh, actually, David, we've had some pats on the bat and some thanks from residents in Utoxeter about our work in, in Waitrose, and I know that councillor De Ville, White and you will be helping me to look at the other main roundabouts next year down Dovebank, which are in need of repair. While I'm thanking people, I'd like to thank, um, Trevor Meller, who's part of our division on highways team, who retires today. Trevor has been an absolute stalwart to me over the last two and a half years, and his knowledge and skills are going to be greatly missed, and I thank Trevor for all the work that he's done for us in, in my part of, uh, of Staffordshire. And his parting gift to me was that, um, I've been going on about some road signs at the bottom of Highwood Road now for about 18 months, and Trevor fixed them on Tuesday and sent me a photograph to say councillor Hudson is my parting gift to you. So have a long and happy retirement, Trevor, and thank you for all the work that you've done for Staffordshire Council over your years. Thank you.
Um, I will be my members, I have, um, an awful lot of speakers on this council, so I had Isaiah Desane.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This refers to £186 million, section nine, uh, it's section nine.
We're on item nine?
Yes, investment in highways.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, yes.
Thank you. In fact, one week, even one hour is long time, 11 hours is even longer, considering in the last 13 years, we've got five prime ministers. So considering the inflation, Mr Chairman, and cost and benefit, will the leader took a genuine initiative to bring this waiting, uh, time down from years to months? We always welcome this £186 million. To be honest, we need even more than that to fix our roads and fix our footbuds. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Um, councillor Derek Cookfield.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, it's very good of you to let me speak once again.
Mr Hookfield, I, I don't, I don't, Mr Hookfield, I don't stop anybody speaking.
It's so, it's dry air, you know, and it, it gets your throat, doesn't it? It makes all your throat dry. But I'll try to keep it as short as I possibly can. Can I just say, as far as the highways can see, and it isn't very often, ye me turn round and thank the highways, they're doing a magnificent job in Silverdale, Keel and Upton, right? So the next council that takes over from me within that area, you can say that the area has been sorted out as far as the roads and the potholes and everything else. Now, we've got all that sorted out because I never walk away from a problem. So when I'm talking about the highways, I'm going to incorporate another problem. The other problem is, we'd like some fresh air. We'd like to breathe fresh air in Silverdale, and I think if we can solve the problem with the fresh air, and you all know what I'm talking about, Red Industries, Wallies Quarry, right? If you can breathe some fresh air within the area, our voices will probably be a lot better. I know you'd like me to get rid of mine, right? Because you don't like me standing up here, and I, and I aren't frightened, can I just say?
Mr Hookfield, um, I, I think, Mr Hookfield, I think I've, I've allowed you to make your point. I, I think it's the, I'm, I'm a very lenient chairman, and you've made your point about Wallies Quarry, thank, thank you so much for that. Um, this, this is about highways, and unless you come back to highways, Mr Hookfield, we're done. Um, but you've made, I have allowed you to make your point about Wallies Quarry because I know how passionate you are about it, and how we all are in this chamber, I've allowed you to do that. The debate is about highways, Mr Hookfield.
Well, well, if you're going to say that, Chairman, I'll come back to highways then as well.
Well, Mr, Mr Hookfield, I, I am eternally grateful that you, you do that.
Yeah, I, I can understand what you're saying, Chairman, right? I aren't like some people stood here and saying they frightened the chairman and all that, and that's why they won't speak, right? Because nothing bothers me, because that's the sort of person I am. Can I just say, Mr Chairman, right, that if you look at Semitie Road, half of it's Simon Tags and half of it's Derek Hookfields, right? Because it's divided within the boundaries, right? And that road, right, wants to win. Now, I don't whether it comes under Simon or whether it comes under me, right? But it needs sorting, right? So if we can ask through you, right, the Chair, the Cabinet Member for highways, if you look at that, because with the amount of lorries that are going on there for the landfill, right, it's ripping all the road up. So I'd just like to say that I brought it up about the highways, right, which is Semitie Road, right, that takes all the wagons into the landfill, that's causing breathing problems, right? I hope you'll accept that.
I, I will accept that, Mr Hookfield. Thank you very much, and I'm sure councillor Williams has taken all of that down and will be in touch with you shortly. Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Significant investment, but it equates to £16.9 million a year, and that's assuming it's not back-end loaded because of the effect of inflation. One of the key points, or key words which I want to pick up, is where it says improving road networks. Now, it doesn't say repairing road networks, so there's the question mark over this as an extra fund to carry on with the pothole repairs, which we've done very successfully. And I, again, I thank David Williams, the cabinet member, for the efforts, certainly in my division, to start putting things right. But is this a fund to carry on with those repairs, or is it a fund to improve road networks? Now, if it's a fund to improve road networks, it's very easy to spend all that money on just one roundabout, one significant roundabout, on one significant junction improvement. So, you know, that won't spread throughout the whole of Staffordshire. If it is to be used for improvements, can we consider those who seem to have been forgotten for a number of years, and that is the pedestrians who are road users? Can we put some of this investment into the footpaths, which have been neglected for many years? I know we've got issues about broadband providers digging them up and whatever, but there's an awful lot of footpaths on all our estates, not just in Biddelf and the Staffordshire moorlands, but I'm sure across all of Staffordshire, which are really unfit for people who've got mobility issues to actually use. And I've certainly got residents in some of my significant estates and significant parts who can't use their mobility vehicles, their electric mobility vehicles, on the footpath. They're having to go onto the road. And frankly, that's keeping them in the house. They're scared to leave home because they don't want to drive, they don't want to ride a mobility scooter on the, on the road network. The other thing is, is we've got the opportunity with this money of looking at pedestrians and a broad spectrum, and looking at safe routes to schools. You know, that's an area which hasn't, hasn't been, has been neglected. We've got an awful lot of projects which we would like to do to make junctions safer, an awful lot of projects, I'm sure, throughout the county with regards to safer pedestrian crossings. The volume of traffic has gone up, the speed of the traffic isn't, isn't decreasing by any stretch of the imagination. And we've all got issues, I see the reports, we've all got issues about too many people taking, driving the children to school and parking badly. I mean, if we can make the pedestrian accesses easier, better, safer, more reliable, more trustworthy, then perhaps we can start easing those pressures around school as well. So it's not so much what is in this report, which is very scant, it's the detail what isn't in this report, what the aim is, what it's for, how it's going to be apportioned, is it going to be divvied out, divvied out above members, is it bids which we've got to put in for new projects, or is it more tarmac filling more potholes? And if we are using more tarmac filling more potholes, let's use the JCB machine or its equivalent to do bigger areas so that they last a little bit longer. One thing which I have seen with the recent rain in this last couple of weeks is the repairs, which we've invested money on this year, absolutely fine, but the bits leading up to the repair have started to pop and move. So let's concentrate, if we are going to do it as a repairs, let's concentrate on the whole place repairs, which we were talking about earlier in the year, and make sure that everything is done properly. Thank you.
councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I really do welcome the investment that's occurring here. And I do acknowledge, as through some of my parish councils, the work that is being done on potholes. I mean, we all know the story. But we are seeing the real differences starting to occur. And certainly my inbox is, from majority of them, is less and less regarding potholes. So I welcome that. And I'd like to take this opportunity in thanking certainly for the Litchfield district team in terms of Gary Hunt and Mary and other colleagues. Their work is excellent under great deals of pressure and criticism from outside coming in. I absolutely stand by those members of staff, and I applaud them, and I thank them very much for the help they actually give me, even if there are some people who wish to segregate them and say they're a waste of time. They're not a waste of time. We're only getting the work done because of them. And it's important that that is acknowledged. So there is what I would like to say, a big thank you. There's still work to be done. We all know that. But this is a good start going forward. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. My light's just gone to red, but I have to say that my traffic lights are going to green. I would like to follow on what councillor Cox has been saying about the tremendous work which has been done by the local teams. They are absolutely fantastic. And if you put that into real terms, currently, within the Litchfield and Tamworth area, they have completed, using the additional government funds which has come to members, another 500,000, another 500, nearly 600 additional projects have been completed. And so really, my thank you to the team and also to David's diligence in making sure that it works. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Was that an early Christmas present? Oh, of course, of course we do. I apologize. We do, yes, we do. Councillor Anne Edgela, who has given us all the candles.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, I really stand on my feet to say a big thank you to David Williams and his team. And the things, how highways now is improving and getting jobs done is really good, I've got to say. And I welcome the start of, I mean, I've stood up in this chamber many times and talked about the A34 and Radford Bank and what a message is into town from my division. And I welcome the start of it. I'm dreading it, actually, because I'm going to get so many complaints, people not being able to get into town, but the job needs to be done. But I really want, I stood on my feet, actually, to say a big thank you to the highways team for including members in their concerns about such a major road into town and asking what our thoughts are. And so I really welcome those meetings and a big thank you again for that. Thank you.
councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to be brief and to add to Phil Hudson's comments about Trevor Meller retiring, he's, he's going to be a sad lot, actually, because I didn't have to explain to Trevor where some obscure road was in my 22 miles by five miles wide division. And the work the lads have done in repairing stuff is just phenomenal. You know, there's things like the Beamhurst roundabout, which cost a lot of money, Mister Yates. It's probably quarter of a million pounds to repair that. But I noticed that social media, people are quick to blame the poor lads who are doing the job. Last night, they were doing some preparatory work in Utoxeter, and there's a four-way traffic lights, and it, boof, it went like mad, oh, why are they doing this? To repair the road, you know, that's how life is. Or they criticize on flooding and the like. And I think there's one or two bits that you've missed out in the, in the paragraph leader. One is the work that the teams are doing on flooding. I went through Marchington last night, and there was a flood incident, as ever. But when you've got water cascading off the land through a hedge, you know, that's what you expect. But still, people drive through and then hydrolock their engines because they've tried to drive through something they shouldn't. And I'm sad to have to tell colleagues that I've had four fatal accidents on my division in the last five months. And without prejudging what the coroner will say, I will say that I will imagine that the verdicts will be driver error in every single case. So for goodness' sake, over the Christmas period, drive safely and just take care. I have had fatalities in my division on Christmas Day, and the emergency services and our people are there to deal with it. So just thinking of that as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Good advice, councillor Atkins. councillor Philip Wood.
Thank you very much, Chair. Just, just a couple of things that I wanted to mention. The first is regarding, regarding the Network North announcement itself, and it pertains to one or two of the other things that we've discussed today around the Love Free bid in Stafford, and whether that includes buses, the content of our employability and skills strategy. These are all public documents that members are free to read. So, you know, it's good to come here and ask questions, but a lot of this information is available, and councillors might want to avail themselves of it before the meeting so that the quality of the debate is good. This is roads maintenance funding that we're talking about here, rather than for junction improvements and other changes such as that, much needed though those things are. The other thing I just wanted to do was to just add my best wishes to Trevor Meller on his retirement. Trevor is one of the most wonderfully grumpy and wonderfully effective council officers I have ever come across. And whenever I have come across him, as likely as not, and it'd be knee-deep in something not very pleasant-looking, fixing a problem on our highways, which, you know, typical Trevor would be, he'd be there with his van, bag of tools that he probably wasn't supposed to have, dealing with something straightaway rather than waiting for it to get done some other way. And that might be slightly out of process, I don't know, but it's certainly very true to Trevor's processes. He, he's a great model for public service, and I hope he massively enjoys his well-earned retirement. He often drinks in my, in my local, so I'll hopefully be able to buy him just one pint as a, as a retirement gift at some point in the near future. But thank you to him. And let's hope we've got, we've got somebody else coming through the ranks to replace him with a similar level of drive and public service spirit.
Trevor does, two accolades to Trevor, I'm sure. It sounds as though we'll really miss the wonderfully grumpy officer. It does, it certainly does. And from a personal point of view, I don't know him, but I wish him all, all the very best. councillor Mark Deville.
Thank you, members, for such positive comments. Our highways teams do do a great job in all weathers, don't they? And I think all their efforts came to the fore recently on that Saturday night when we had the extremely heavy snowfall. They were out there, you know, early hours of the morning, trying their best to keep, keep us all moving and keep us all safe. Councillor Cox is exactly right. There is much more to do. Richard, you're right. There's no complacency. We've got much to do, and we're just getting on with it. That's what we do. And again, this is turning into the Trevor Meller show, I know, but I'd like to add to councillor Hudson's comments. I'll miss his great sense of humour. Yes, he was grumpy, but what a wonderful sense of humour he had. And of course, he comes from the deep south of this county. I come from the far north of this county. And I well remember, Chairman, Trevor was seconded to the north for a, for a short time. And I remember meeting him, and we were discussing some potential works outside of Leek Town Football Club one day. And Trevor said, councillor Deville, please slow down your speech. You up north speak a different language than we do down south. He got a great sense of humour. He was a real do-it man, get things done. And I join you, Phil, in wishing Trevor all the very, very best for a long and happy and healthy retirement.
councillor Sahid Desain.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just also echo what you've said about Trevor? And it was a tremendous joy and privilege to mobilize the community whenever we do any highways issues or anything. So nothing but I can wish him a very good retirement. And I hope Trevor is listening from every day of his holiday now. Thank you.
It's all recorded, councillor Desain, so if he wants to go back and look at these accolades, they are there for him to see forever. councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. And as everybody else, and I'm sure everybody will, we wish Trevor well for the future, and we thank him for his efforts for Staffordshire County Council. He's been a great team member, and he will be a loss, but we hope he has a good and long time to enjoy his retirement. Lovely to hear some of the comments that have gone on today. And actually, as to echo Mark's point, we are not complacent. There's a lot of plans now with what we can do, where we can affect change, where we can make sure that people can see that, and where we are going to deliver the best possible outcomes, such as with the Radford Bank and, yes, and councillor Edgela might be happy, even Wolverhampton Road, if you notice the signs are getting there. So, you know, we're doing quite a bit. Unfortunately, if anybody had looked at the, the way that the money's being sent, no, it's not that amount of money over 10 years. We'll be getting 3.18 for next year and 3.18 for the year after. And then the rest of how it's going to be sectioned up with that sort of money hasn't been clarified yet. So we're waiting on that. However, even with that amount of money, what we have done, and we are doing, is making sure that, one, this council, the Conservative administration, is putting yet another £15 million of investment into our highways. And we're also going to make sure that every penny of this extra £3 million that has come back from what they removed from us from government is going to be spent well and wisely. We're using our Pothole Pro all over the county, and at the moment, I believe it's in South Staffordshire. It's done some excellent work up north, and we're looking to try to make sure that everybody is made aware of when it is in and out of your areas. And quite rightly, we are also looking at what potential jobs and projects that we can do in the future with the money that we're going to get. But I can honestly say that, especially with the help of councillor Deville and councillor White, we are really getting the money down to the pennies. We are really looking at what is the best way that we can deliver it. And as such, I still have the problem with the fibre companies that are due still coming into the county. We've now got another one that's now started. So what we are doing, and just like you can with the roads, if you have a path that has degenerated and has got dangerous, you can still report it, and that is categorized exactly the same as the roads. So that can be done. What we are looking to do as well, and what we've also started is a brand-new innovative material that we're using through RMS, one of our contractors. It actually goes on a little bit like Slurry Seal, but isn't Slurry Seal. So it actually means that we can do certain areas. So we're trialing that at the moment, and we're looking at its effectiveness and its cost-effectiveness. We're also really are trying to do our, our bit for the environment. So we're using our thermal patches, which actually have carbon calculators for how much we are reducing the amount of carbon per repair with those. So we're doing it across the county. We're also going to be working with districts and boroughs with regards to carbon capture and planting verges. Huge amounts of work going on. We're not complacent, and we're doing the right things. Drainage is always going to be an issue. We are in the worst time of year. Potholes will form. Please report them so we can get them assessed and we can get them addressed. And where we can, we'll do permanent repairs. And where we can't, we'll do temporarys and then go back. That has happened now. The communications have improved. You get the MyStaff app, you get the notification, you get told what it is, you get told when it's being repaired, you get told when it is repaired, and you have your pictures. And that is right the way across the county. Really good, positive moves forward. And this administration is really working hard to continue that way of moving forward, and will always do so. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. And moving on to item 10 of the leading statement, which is the longest night. councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Samaritans do a fantastic job, but the escalating pressures on the mental health of young people are such that their volunteers can't possibly be expected to meet those demands. I think that there should be professional mental health support in every middle and high school, because that's really where support can best be delivered. Admittedly, not during holidays, but to give young people the support they need, because there really has been, since Covid, a massive increase in mental health distress among young people. And I think it's particularly important that support is there in schools, because I've heard from one resident that young people are sometimes waiting up to two years to access support from CAMHS. And that really isn't sustainable when, when young people are in crisis. Thank you.
councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I will be brief to support, obviously, the initiative here with the Samaritans. And I can advise this council, the Litchfield District Council, will be illuminating District Council House on that evening in support of this worthy recognition to, to highlight the excellent work that Samaritans... excellent work the Samaritans do. And this year will probably see a difficult year, and I'm sure that they're going to be busy. I don't want to advertise they want to be busy, because we don't want to hear that, but they're going to be because of the pressures that we are facing in our current society. So it is worthy, and District Council in Lichfield will be supporting.
Councillor Tom Lovbury-Rudd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to praise the workers Samaritans and of course, credit to the Member for Rural West, what Lichfield District Council are doing first of all. It's no secret that I myself suffer from mental health issues, indeed a senior member of the Cabinet suggested that I bring the Samaritans two years ago. Two years ago this year, two years ago this week, my best friend killed himself. My grandfather died on Christmas Day that year, so I get it when we talk about Christmas pleasures. And right now, I consider a young friend of mine who just last week was, tried to finish himself off in Staffordshire Town Centre. Mental health is a prominent issue in this area, but we are making some progress in regards, just yesterday I was in a meeting, consultation on final recognition from this council about recognising that those suffering from addiction is linked to mental health services, which is an improvement. That's something that when I first came here, it was like, popped off. I'm glad that's changed, because it's really important. And I think that we should remember that this time of year is going to be very difficult. And it doesn't matter what your position in, whether you're a councillor, whether you're a business manager, whether you're a teacher, mental health affects everybody. And I personally know, from my own personal experience, how good the Samaritans are for listening at this time period, and I owe my life, actually, to one of the workers that talked to me two years ago, and I'd like to credit them for that, and I hope that the work they do continues, because they're a wonderful organisation. Thank you.
Councillor Lovbury-Rudd, thank you so much for sharing those very personal experiences. Councillor Jonny McMon.
Thank you, Chair. I had a patient in Cannock, whose name I won't write, who was going through considerable difficulty when I saw him as a GP. And I've recently, quite by accident, met up with him again, seen a bit of him. He's a completely changed man. And the reason he's a completely changed man is because he's got involved in the voluntary sector to help people who've had similar issues to him. He does a fantastic job and he's really enjoying life now, and it's so good to see. And this reminds me of the whole business of the friendship of strangers. And it's incumbent upon us all, not just councillors, but everybody in the community, to be cognisant of that and to remember it, and we should actively encourage it. One of the most therapeutic things people can do when they're struggling emotionally is to start to volunteer and to start to help other people. And I think that despite the difficulties that have just been articulated, we can all do something. And I'm reminded of Amos Oz, I know nothing about this man, but he's an Israeli philosopher, he's a Jewish philosopher. And Simon Sharmar mentioned him recently in an article about the whole Israeli-Palestine thing. He says, "The conflagration is terrible. It's incumbent upon us all to bring a bucket to extinguish it. If we don't have a bucket, take a cup. If you don't have a cup, bring a teaspoon of water." We've all got a teaspoon in us and many of us have got a bucket in us, let's use it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McMon. Councillor Anne Edgler.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Councillor McMon, that was wonderful, thank you for that. Can I first of all thank the leader for including this in his statement, please, about the Samaritans? And picking up on councillor Atkins' point, I do agree with you, actually, you know, about schools, but it's not the schools, actually, that should be, but every school needs a quiet place where children can go if they've got a problem, that can talk to somebody, be it a teaching assistant that's got some sort of knowledge in mental health, that they can talk to that person and help them through that crisis. Now, there's nobody knows that more than I personally, because if my son had had the help right at that beginning of his life, I might not be in the situation I am today. So I fully understand where you're coming from on that. But can I, you'll notice I've all given you a Samaritan's leaflet, I've all given you a little green light to put in your window on the 22nd of December, and please do not let children or animals near those lights, because they can be quite dangerous, so keep them away from children and animals. But, but, but please, but please, will you all, let's make Staffordshire green on the 22nd of December, so you can think of anywhere in your division or your borough that can light up and make it green, please do. We may need to highlight, it is such, such a major problem, mental health, and it is growing every day, and it's the children, really, that I feel for, really do. So please, let's make Staffordshire green. And I want to finish by just not thanking the Samaritans, but every single person in Staffordshire that's working with people with mental health problems, I want to say from us all, a big thank you. You're doing a fantastic job and it must affect your mental health, the people that's working with people, trying to cure them. So please, please, a big thank you to you all for everything you do for people with mental health, and a happy Christmas to you all as well. Thank you.
Anne, councillor Edgler, keep up the fantastic work you do, you're a fantastic advocate. You're a fantastic advocate for people with mental health issues, and I know you keep bringing it to the forefront, and just keep up that fantastic work. Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make one very, very small point, and that's about mental health and people who either take or attempt to take their own life. Statistics will show that a good percentage of people who do take their own life are not known to services at all. So it isn't just about improving services for people with known mental health, it's incumbent on us all to do our own little bit, and we ran that campaign about talking about suicide, didn't we, to think about it and listen to what people say, and if you do pick up on things, just try and follow them up and give them that little bit of help, but it isn't just about mental health services.
Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise simply to thank Anne Edgler for all the work you do. It is, I asked Anne to be the mental health champion for Staffordshire County Council. It doesn't attract any allowance, any additional allowance, it's just something I asked her to do, because I know she was particularly passionate about the subject. And boy, has she embraced it. On behalf of Staffordshire County Council, she promotes the work of mental health charities and mental health support across this entire county, and has done so diligently and tirelessly over the time that certainly I've been leader, the past three and a half years. Just a quick point from me, which is really one of the most valuable things we can do over the Christmas period, is ensure that social interaction takes place between people. Young people get themselves buried in their phones, buried in their electronic games, and it's that human interaction and that human connection which is so valuable. And I think Jonny McMon made the point really well, which is about helping other people. I don't know about you, but the time I get the biggest kick of being a councillor isn't anything to do with what we do here, it's when a resident comes up to me and asks me to help them solve a problem and I crack it. And doesn't that, I can't speak for anybody else, but that certainly gives me the best feeling possible. And I know from my experience of local councillors, as opposed to some other politicians, we're all in it to do the right thing by the people we represent, and we all want to help our communities get better. And I think everybody in this chamber does a really good job of that. Let's do more of it, let's encourage more people to help each other, and let's hope that we have a happy Christmas and that people's mental health starts to improve on the back of the work we're all doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor White. And the final item on the leading statement is number 11, which is the Christmas message.
First of all, I would like to convey my special thanks to you and your concert and the lovely card for the Sophie Hen that you sent us in our pigeonholes there. Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. At the same time, from the Labour Group, this side of the chamber, we wish you and everybody, the colleagues, a very happy, happy time. And also, at the same time, I would like to also recognise the dedications, determinations, and the hard work of all colleagues, all colleagues, and our officers, frontline servicals, and NHS staffs, volunteers, charitable organisations, and also our hard-working residents. So everyone, enjoy this time and very merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, councillor Hussain, that's a really great tribute to our staff and all the hard work they've done in this year. You know, sometimes it feels a bit difficult, doesn't it, doing this? No? You're doing the wrong job, Graham. And sometimes we can get a bit down about it, but actually, at the end of the year, when we think about everything that we've done and the hard work that we've put in, it is worthwhile, and it's down to our officers, it's down to the people of Staffordshire, it's down to you and the hard work that you do throughout the year as councillors. Thank you all for everything you're doing, and I do hope you have a really brilliant Christmas. And if you don't celebrate Christmas, have an opportunity to take a break. Hopefully, the air is fresh for Derek and he can have a big lungful of it.
I've always been special.
Yeah, you have always been special, Derek, yes. But happy Christmas, everybody, and I hope you have a great break, looking forward to seeing you in the new year.
That fell along the conclusion to the meeting, but it's far from the conclusion to the meeting, it's just the conclusion to the member's statement, so that's great. And thank you, councillor White, and thank you, councillor Hussain, for such lovely remarks, and certainly finishing that statement off in a very positive sense. Moving on to item six, which is the report of the Stafford, excuse me, we're not moving on to item six just yet. At the end of the leading statement, I move the report received, and is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, now we can move on to item six. Councillor Cox, will you move the consideration of report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I move the proceedings of reports of the police fire and crime panel meetings of the 10th of October and 13th of November 2023. Thank you.
Councillor Gillian Pardsey.
Thank you, Chair. Well, there's been quite a scramble during the morning of taking the credit for various things, so let's see who wants to take the credit on this one then. On page 37, on the third bullet point, we're told in relation to police officers that officer experience was highlighted as an area of concern due to the age of new recruits. Well, that shouldn't come as a surprise to any of us, Chair. There have been such damaging cuts to the numbers of police officers, it's not just officers we got rid of, it was also their skills and their vast experience. And without the appropriate thinking that went into that, it was a no-brainer that it would have a damaging effect on the numbers of experienced police officers. My second point, Chair, on the first bullet point of the fire and rescue plan, that the three-person crewing trial is still going ahead. If I could remind everyone, please, that it's going ahead despite the recommendations of the fire service trade unions, which all along has said it should be a minimum of a four-person crew. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Sahid Hussain.
Thank you, Chair. May I just seek your kind attentions on page 42 at the last paragraph, point number four, and would like to share my honest observations on this. As a civic head and a first citizen of East Staffordshire Borough Council, Mr. Chairman, I have witnessed a wonderful Remembrance Day celebration, so I would like to convey my credit to my local charge and Reverend Dr. Robin Trotter, my local Borough Council, East Staffordshire Borough Councils, on all the police services for their own support, and besides all, the whole multicultural residents for their support to recognise the importance of these celebrations as well. And finally, Mr. Chairman, on this note, I would like to assure everyone, antisemitism is racism, Islamophobia is racism, there is no place in Staffordshire of these things, not in our wonderful country. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have no further speakers, unless Mr. Cox wants to come back. Okay. I move the report received, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Item seven, which is questions, understanding order eight. Members, the five questions and answers have been circulated to members and published on our website. In accordance with the usual procedure, the questions and answers will be taken as read. I will allow each questioner a maximum of five minutes to ask a supplementary question and to receive an answer. No debate is allowed on the questions. Councillor Yates to councillor Wilson.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much for your question, it's very enlightening. I am a little bit confused on how we could possibly have a cul-de-sac footpath used for so many years, which people have used to get from A to B, but I'll take that as read and I'll pass it on to the people who, the residents who've contacted me, and I'll certainly be interested in being aware of that meeting, to be honest, can you hear me? Follow-up question is slightly different, it's related to footpaths. Our local secretary of the Staffordshire Ramblers Association is working with the officers to see if we can get a volunteering policy organised. Now, I know this is something which I raised...
Mr. Yates, is there a question?
It is a question.
Because it feels as though you're making points, and I guess it will come to a conclusion. But the sooner you come to the question, I'm sure...
It's a very specific question, because it relates to the volunteers' policy with regard to ad hoc volunteering, because we've discussed this at length before. They've been assured that they'll have an answer in spring about setting up a policy so that the Ramblers can actually help on footpath maintenance in the local area, and it will affect the whole of Staffordshire. Can I have the Cabinet member's commitment that that report will come through so that we can actually get on and do some volunteering during the spring and summer months to improve our footpaths? Thank you.
And councillor Wilson.
Thank you, councillor Yates, for the question. If I can say, that volunteers already help out on our public rights of way, they do it across the county, and I'm very happy to give you examples of that outside of this meeting. But yes, the framework for volunteers is coming forward early next year, and I'd be happy, again, as I say, to have that conversation with the member. Thank you.
Councillor Pardsey to councillor Philip White.
Thank you, Chair. My follow-up question is, to what extent does this council take into account that forcing unready people into ill-suited work is not the answer to long-term sustainable employment? Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Philip White.
Thank you for the question. I think that's principally outside of my remit or this council's remit. It sounds to me mostly like a question for DWP, but within the activities of this council, I would draw councillor Pardsey's attention to the activities of our adult community learning service, which was earlier this year rated as good by Ofsted, it was an extremely strong good as well, I'd encourage all members to read the report if they haven't, which offers a wide range of courses, that as one of their principal goals is encouraging people back towards active engagement in ways that will encourage them, hopefully into employment if they are not currently in employment. So very gentle, very progressive, at the pace that people want to take it. I'd also highlight our open door scheme, which has been running for many years now, which in a similarly progressive way and focused on groups of people who in one way or another may suffer from exclusion or difficulty accessing employment, to gain experience that will help them along that path. So certainly, regarding the activities of this local authority, we don't do anything that I think would look like the stick, but hopefully we do offer lots of encouragement and practical support. But hopefully, we do offer lots of encouragement and practical support.
Councillor Charlotte Atkins to councillor David Williams.
Thank you for the response. I do hope that evening services will be looked at. To give an example, it's impossible to get a bus to and from Stoke-on-Trent after eight o'clock at night. And not only does that mean that people can't access restaurants and theatres and cinemas, it also is a big safety issue because if you don't have personal transport, then you might try to hitch a lift or use some other form of transport which is not entirely safe. But the second issue, which you're identifying the answer, is the issue of the shortage of bus drivers, which I think is a real concern. And I wondered what the county council is doing to work with operators to ensure that they can recruit and train more bus drivers. Thirdly, I think what's really important is that the county council works with other local authorities to adopt a more strategic approach to bus coverage in the county council area. Thank you.
Councillor Williams.
Yeah, thank you for your supplementary question. To be fair, I think the fact that we didn't get any money out of our Bus Service Improvement Plan grant was something that was disappointing. However, working with officers, this administration has still been able to produce an enhanced partnership. We're working with bus companies right the way across the county and those that are cross-border so that we can ensure that we get the best coverage. We're working to be able to ensure that they will have upgraded buses where possible and we are putting in bids to be able to support them with this. They are private companies at the moment and as such, we will support them wherever we can to ensure that they give the best coverage possible. Thank you.
Councillor Hussain to councillor Williams.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Can I just also thank the Cabinet member for his reply as well? Also, can I just assure him that those three roads, especially especially Oxbridge Street, Anglesey Road and Branson Road, there is no superfast fibre network issues. This has been done well before, few years before. So I would be grateful if he can look into the matter. The situation in there is very dire, especially for the footpaths. And normal pedestrians, they really struggle and people with a wheelchair as well. So I would like to have his urgent attention on this thing. Thank you.
Councillor Williams.
Thank you for your supplementary. Unfortunately, as you say, there might have had one company go through, but we had petitions for 17 companies at the moment. We've just had new companies arrive out of those 17. So we are making sure that we are doing the right thing and repairing pathways that do need repairs in the right ways. But we're also ensuring that, remember, that none of these companies are going to use the same trenches or works. So it will be the case where we are making sure that we are not squandering taxpayers' money. We're making sure that we will do repairs as and where appropriate. And as I said quite previously, if you have parts where this is damaged, you can report them exactly the same as roads and they get categorised and will be repaired accordingly. Thank you.
And the final question, which is councillor Afzal, to councillor Jessel.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you for the reply. No supplementary. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the last item on the agenda, which is petitions. Does any member have a petition they wish to present?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Today, the 14th of December 2023, I, Said Hussain, county councillor, but on twin divisions, on behalf of the undersigned and myself, am profoundly concerned about the tragic loss of innocent lives in Palestine, including children, women and elderly individuals. Many of those impacted have connections to families living in Staffordshire. We respectfully request that Staffordshire County Council take actions by urging the Prime Minister, the right honourable Rishi Sunak MP and relevant authorities to promptly initiate a ceasefire, I repeat, a ceasefire in Palestine and provide essential humanitarian aid. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Can I just comment this one, please?
Well, members, that concludes our meeting. And thank you for your attention. But most of all, adding to the leader's words earlier on, have an absolutely wonderful Christmas. A few more days of work left before we finish. So let's finish our work, spend time with your families and be truly rested and look forward to seeing you, most of you, in the new year. Thank you so much. And please stay and enjoy your lunch. Thank you.